Ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barstail?
Present.
Councilmember Jennings?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Mayor Garrett?
Present.
Mayor Procham Cantor, absent.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Procham Cantor.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Did I say Councilmember Hammond?
You did not.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond. Okay, yes.
No, I... Pledge of Allegiance.
We are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have approval of the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Sorry.
None. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Agenda's approved. We have a presentation from the Southfield School Board. We'll push it to maybe once they get here. Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you need to make a motion to...
To move it? Do you want to do it at the end?
Yeah, you should move it at least to the end, and then if you're about that time, then you can...
So I'll make a motion to move Agenda Item 5A to Agenda Item 16.
Second.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Hey, we are going to go for a public comments for items that's on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and I ask, as I said in the study session, for everyone to look at the bullet points on the back of the agenda that is for addressing City Council. If you would like to speak, please come to the podium and give your name.
Hi, my name is Lauren Barris. I'd like to ask the council to vote yes on changing the zoning to allow first-floor residency. And this will allow the CERNO company to develop the Antilathrop School and, in essence, save as much as a school as possible in their new development. As my husband and I stated at the last Planning Commission meeting, we don't have an emotional investment in the school, but we know that there are a lot of people here who do. And the CERNO company does beautiful work in preserving history when doing a development with historic buildings, so why wouldn't we let them save it? They have been working on this for years and have met nine of the 10 criteria of the HDC and have their blessing, and it's so thankful that CERNO is willing to work with them. So I say please vote yes so that there could be historic preservation in this development and that the people who are emotionally invested can enjoy part of the past in the new development. Also, I'd like to... I'd like you to share with us, if you could, at some point. If not, on the agenda, maybe in council comments, a little bit of the master plan so people understand the vision of Lathrop Village that's been laid out for years. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? No one?
So I guess it's the appropriate time to talk about the first-floor occupancy of the proposed plan for the Antilathrop School. Is there a point to have in a master plan if, in fact, when development comes into town, the master plan is basically ditched and you work around it? If, in fact, the master plan does not meet your satisfaction, then we ought to redo it. But until you decide that the master plan is a defunct document, I think we ought to keep following it. I wrote a little piece today indicating that I'm happy that the building's going to be saved, but I'm unhappy based upon the fact that we are going to allow first-floor occupancy. The development could provide for both. You have first-floor retail business, and then you've got a couple stories above it with what I would consider seniors because they're the ones that we had identified in the master plan as needing that extra space to go after they've outlived their house here in Lathrop that's not addressed in this apartment complex. No senior wants to live with young families and, you know, the first-floor parking with the lights and being right on the Southfield Corridor just doesn't make a lot of sense. So if you're planning on trashing the master plan, then we should recreate it. But until we have, we should continue the best we can following the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your name? Three seconds to speak.
What's your name?
Bruce Skelvis Woodworth.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
I'm Diane Anderson, and I attended the Historic District Commission meeting, and I just want to put on the record what actually happened there. There are developers who come into town, take over an old building, allow it to decay, and then make threats that we will tear it down even though it's in a historic district because it's been torn down. They get away with it because city councils say, "We can't do anything. It's private property." And in the case of the school, that's particularly obnoxious because it wouldn't be private property if the council hadn't gotten in bed with CERNO and basically allowed that to happen. I have never seen the kind of behavior by a group as bad as what the CERNOs demonstrated at that Historic District Commission meeting. Essentially, they were saying, "Give us what we want, or we'll tear it down." They tried to say how great they were with other developments, and the only thing they keep citing is the Birmingham Post Office. If you don't know Birmingham, the post office is right next to the Anglican Church, directly across from the library, and diagonally across from the park. There's no way the city council would ever have allowed him to do anything to basically trash the outside of that building while he could repurpose it. He talks about how great he is. On his website, he talks about the Old Town Hall that he trashed, which was a building that could have lasted over hundreds of years if well-maintained. On his website here, he says that they're on about renovation and repurposing the original city hall. CERNO's idea of repurposing was to trash the building, to raise it to the ground, and put up a cheap strip mall that was originally Kinko's, now it's FedEx. Within a matter of years, that building started to fall apart. The columns were coming off and so forth, and that's typical of the CERNO buildings. So I just want to put on the public record what happened at that Historic District Commission. Nobody thought it was a good idea. Nobody liked it. But when he started threatening to tear the building down, and it's in bad shape, as I say, because the city let it. Back when I was... For five years, I did the showcases here. And one time I came in and I alerted the city that there was a car, and a car behind the school, and I thought they were going to vandalize it. No, it turned out that the school was being used by the CERNO Cookie Company to store their cookies with the blessing of the Lathrop Village City Council. As I've said, there's been more damage done to Lathrop in the last eight years than the previous eight decades. And the CERNO group, when they tell you how wonderful they repurposed the Old Town Hall, be very careful of a company that makes the kind of statements they did and that basically threatens that you're going to lose your building altogether if you don't give them what they want.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Caroline Latham Boulevard. I'm a little confused again. The residents are being told that it's too soon in the process for the city to have a town hall to meet with the residents about this plan, that we need to wait until it comes before the Planning Commission with an actual plan before we should get excited and upset. This leads me to wonder, why then? Is there any discussion on changing the zoning ordinance to help out this development? In the past, I've seen people apply for zoning variances. They've had to prove hardship, and, you know, they've already... It just seems like this is the cart going before the horse. And I also wanted to just say that I was reviewing the master plan for the city today, and specifically, and I quote what it says about the school property. "It is envisioned that this site will retain the historic structure and allow for additional buildings that could incorporate a mix of public and private property, including residential office, retail, restaurant, entertainment, gathering spaces, and recreational areas." I don't see how much of that can happen if residents are allowed to be on the first floor. The building would be locked. There would be no opportunity for community use of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Hi, I'm Gil Hogan. I live on Lathrop Boulevard. I'm a 25-year resident of Lathrop Village. My wife actually went to Antilathrop Elementary School, and as much as I love that historic building, I would love... I think that we need to make sure that whatever we do with that site, whether it's renovation and so forth, I think we need to consider it holistically. And I think the part of it that is concerning me most is first-floor residency because I think that changes the dynamics with all of that. And I actually run a pretty sizable security integration company. So we deal a lot with personal protection in commercial spaces. And first-floor residency is a different level of protection and safety that's required. And I think, as we think about new residents moving into the city, I think that's something else to consider. Also, the number of units that I've heard thrown around is a lot of units put on the east side of Southfield Road. Living east of Southfield, you know, it's only two blocks deep, and that's a lot of people that are going to put on the... You're going to push onto the sidewalks and so forth. So I think if you had, you know, less units, I think that would maybe make it a healthier environment for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard?
Good evening. My name's Shelley Reeves, and I live on California Northeast. I've already expressed before that I'm opposed to this whole idea of the apartment complex, living right behind it. As it's been proposed, or at least the plans that I've seen, look like a massive parking lot eating up all of that green space, towering over all of our residential areas, coupled with DTE coming through with letters now talking about needing to trim trees and so forth. So the little bit of privacy that we do have might end up losing that before this is even erected. I just, again, want to express that I don't think that our city council should have to adjust our ordinances for corporation to potentially... You know, this is all perspect... like, potential, but to me, it seems like they're using this opportunity potentially to go into a pilot to potentially line their... or build their portfolio on the cheap. And I think that we need to be a little bit more cautious and careful. I know that our city council wants to have that feather in their hat to say, you know, "We brought development here, and we've done this great thing for this community." But I don't think that we need to rush into it and then just bend over to whatever they need. I think that they need to follow our ordinances as written, and it's not just customizable to them. They came here and said, you know, kind of threatening, like, "Well, we're ready to do something. Like, why wouldn't you? How dare you question what we would, you know, give to the city?" I've lived behind it since 2012. It's completely vacant. I've seen security companies come and go. It's just, like, right now it seems to suit them because there's an opportunity for them to build their portfolio. And I say we don't, you know... We're not blind to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
All right, Jonathan Tarrell. You know, I've dealt with developers a bit in the past. Developers tick boxes in advance to remove obstacles. They are ticking our boxes, okay? One of those boxes doesn't seem to make much sense to me, but it's a plan that was developed many years ago, you know, and that's this idea of first-floor business, and that's the rationale for bringing things up to the street. So now, we want to cut it an exception for first-floor residences, but we're not dealing with the, you know... Perhaps the current thinking is not to have businesses, okay? That doesn't... Maybe that doesn't fit at all. I think we should go ahead and change the zoning so that they can tick that box. But let's see at the same time if it... Maybe it is time to rethink the master plan, okay? One thing I... In that meeting the other day, I asked if... I asked if underground parking is feasible. And I kind of got an indication back that it's not infeasible. I didn't have a discussion about it as well as the hydrology and, you know, geology wrong... Who wants to look out at this flat parking lot on the surface, okay? From either the city side or from their apartments? Who wants to walk out in the rain and snow and go clear their... We're talking about seniors. They're going to go out and clear the snow? You know, so let's see if we can channel them more in that direction and give them the ability to do that. Maybe get those wings... One of those wings off of Southfield, okay? But give them, you know... It's going to be years before anything can be done. So the other thing I'd love to see them channeled to this extent that we can to do something more creative than those cookie cutter wings. They've done better than that. So let them do better than that here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Hello. My name is Sharon McCollas. I live at... on California Southeast, so... And I have a very big dog that I walk on a regular basis, and I'm always using that park right around the school. And I see the school in disrepair. And I've lived here since 2002... or 2004, so a little bit longer than the lady since 2012. It seems like there's a lot of competition around who's been here longest, who knows the history the best. Let me just say, it makes no difference to me how long you've lived here, if you've been here for 10 years, five years, three years, whatever. You have a vested interest in the property and what your city looks like. I feel like the city, whatever decisions have been made recently, have really improved. I... Again, I moved here despite how unattractive our city was, okay? People can make up any stories they want. Driving down those little... These little shopping areas, not having a downtown, these things are very unattractive. I moved here anyway because I have other reasons that I wanted to live there. And so, again, for me, I support having... First of all, I would say to people, we have a first-floor residency when we have those townhouses that are right off of the freeway. So I'm assuming that at some point, that got, you know, overruled as well if that was not supposed to be allowed, that first-floor occupancy. The way I look at it is, I support the first-floor occupancy. I look at it more so from the perspective of, if there are elderly people, they're not going to take an elevator or stairs. They're going to just roll, you know, or use their walkers into that first-floor property, that apartment that I'm sure we can make very safe. I've also been told that the green space will be protected. The park that exists today, that, again, very few people use, I've been told that that green space will be maintained. So I support the initiative. I'd like to see more in terms of the changes that are going to come because I did see a very old draft, I think, of what the plan is, and it was not super attractive. But I've been told that there will be some changes coming, so...
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to be heard?
Hi, I'm Suzanne S. I live on Rainbow Drive. I live in the second house that we invested in here. There's a lot of people in this room who've bought second and third houses because they didn't want to move away. There's some people in this room that grew up here and went to that school. That's not me. I grew up in Frampton Hills. But what's interesting to me about what the woman who just preceded me said was she is uninformed, and that's a shame. And our city's e-newsletters have been doing a much better job informing us about what's going on lately, but we still... We should have the proposal images in that e-newsletter. You know, an e-newsletter is free to print. There's no printing. So it can be endless. It could have everything in it. The reason that the first-floor residences are at issue right now is because it's first-floor residences in the Hexagon Village Center first floor, not at the perimeter, not the townhouses, on 11 Mile or on Evergreen or, you know, at the edges. We're talking about changing the center, Village Center, which is one way it's referred to in our master plan, also known as City Center. Mixed use is what it's zoned for right now. Mixed use, which includes residential on the upper story. There's also a height limit to our buildings, or there used to be. That's why we have all these buildings that are half submerged and half above, like the lofts. Some of them have fallen into real disrepair, and the city is actually in lawsuits right now fighting that disrepair and fighting some slum landlords that still own property in town. If we change the ordinance in this sweeping way, we open ourselves up to permitting that kind of activity and not having legal standing to kick the people out who are living without, like, gas meters and water meters for residential. Those are things I've heard Bruce Cantor talking about, trying to go after those unpaid utilities. Anyway, the CERNO group has presented three different proposals. They are on our website... Excuse me. They're on MinaCode in the Agenda packets. They are also on Facebook, on the Village Voice, Lathrop Village Voice Facebook page. I'm the... One of the admins there, and I've made sure to put those images up so people can see what we're talking about. And it is very modern, and it is very dominant, and it is very residential, it's apartments. And truly, CERNO owns so much of the Hexagon. It is our Village Center. The FedEx Building... Excuse me. They own so much, they could easily take this and run with it and bulldoze all their properties, including where Middle East just went in, including Panera, why not? And put apartment buildings facing this new structure. They could do it right afoot from the sidewalk. This will be dominant and so different and will...
Thank you.
...all that Lathrop has established itself as a sense of place.
Thank you. Who would like to be heard next?
Lori Coons, I just wanted to say during all the public comments, we would like to think that the council is listening, and Kelly Garrett hasn't listened to one thing. She keeps on writing. Thank you.
Just to jump out... Just to jump out, I'm writing all your notes down so I remember exactly what to address since we have to address everyone at the end of the meeting. Some sign. I apologize. Anyone else want to go for a public comment? Anyone else? Hearing none? Let's go on and get an approval motion for the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yep.
Councilmember Jennings? Mayor Garrett?
Yes. That passes. Next, we'll have public hearings for... First is going to be the delinquent water and sewer billing special assessment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll give a quick background before opening a public hearing. This is a yearly thing for city council to consider. These are the bills that have not been paid over this past year. So after the public hearing, council has the opportunity to approve this special assessment rule, which will then be forwarded on to those applicable properties taxes.
Thank you. Does anyone want to be heard regarding the delinquent water and sewer billing special assessment? Hearing none. The hearing for the delinquent water and sewer billing special assessment is closed. Next, we'll have the public hearing for the Public Act 33, Police and Fire Special Assessment District.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And during the study session, I was asked to kind of share the process of PA 33. So essentially, in Michigan, Public Act 33 or PA 33 refers to a law that allows municipalities to establish a special assessment district to fund police and fire protection services, essentially meaning that property owners within a designated area, which we're trying to do tonight, can be specially assessed to cover the cost of these services. So this process includes creating a special assessment district, which happens tonight, and then we'll hold a public hearing, happening now, that will determine the boundaries, and then later, come May, we'll finalize an assessment role based off this district and based off the new 2025 taxable values for council to consider. So this is just the first step in many for this process to move forward.
Thank you. Would anyone like to be heard regarding the Public Act 33, Police and Fire Special Assessment District?
I guess it's not really a comment, but more of a question, and you can't answer me. So this may be a viewpoint, but I'm curious as to if this has established the length of time that it would be and also the number of mills that it would be or would everybody get the same amount of mills and what that equates to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard?
Hello, my name is Leslie Valian. I'm all for supporting safety, and I really support our police officers. I want everyone in this room and the council to know that my son is a police officer. My question is, by passing this assessment, of which I read that it could be 10 mills for capital and also 10 mills for operation costs, have you decided that you're going to limit both of those categories to three mills? One, two, if you do limit it to three mills, which of those categories are you going to be replacing those monies? And also, are you going to be diverting the monies, the tax dollars that we already put towards our safety to other areas of the budget and be supplementing our police force with this new assessment? And as I read, and I could be wrong, that the whole city will be part of this assessment, not just designated areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard?
Hi, good evening. Bruce Skelvis Woodworth. I did discuss briefly with council at the study session about this PA 35. This was originally established back in 1951, and the purpose of this act was to allow communities to get together and form cooperations for police and fire services. In my reading of this, and it's been amended two or three times since then, that the sole purpose still is to allow communities to collaborate with other communities and which we have done here in Lathrop. I don't know if we use Public Act 33 or not, but we did collaborate and have done that. I was informed tonight that there is a provision under... I was informed tonight that there is a provision under 41.81.0, which I haven't had a chance to look at, that an individual community can, in fact, do this type of revenue grab, for lack of a better term, because it's not voted on. It's simply an avenue, apparently, that a single community can take to allow for tax increases in the district that they identify, which will be obviously all Lathrop Village. So, I just, it was not forever intended to be, until recently maybe, to allow the municipality to not request the tax increase, just simply to grab the money. So, I'm against it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Anyone else? That public hearing is now closed. Next, we'll go into our action request item. The first one up is going to be the request to adopt special assessment role resolution 2025-02, outstanding water and sewer bills.
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned earlier, this is a yearly process for us. This just formalizes a special assessment role for the city.
Who would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a special assessment resolution, Rule Number 2025-02.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Thank you. Passes. The next one is the request to approve Resolution 2025-03, Resolution to set date for a public hearing on the estimated cost and creation of a special assessment district.
Yes, Mayor. So as we talked about, today's portion of this process, it just establishes and creates a special assessment district, which would include the entire city. It also sets the second public hearing for this process, which would be where council approves the final rule for your guys' May 19th meeting.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-03, Resolution to set a date for the estimated cost and creation of a special assessment district.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Mike, you said that, I misheard you, the next meeting is May 17th?
May 19th is what I have it down as. Yeah, it'll be the same meeting that we are looking to also approve the budget. So, the couple meetings before that as well, during the study sessions, when we go over the draft budgets, you guys will have draft rolls, and you'll be able to see what this potentially will bring in this next year in terms of the budget. But yeah, as noted in the Finance Review Committee's recommendation, the intent for this is just to be just around 3.1 mills. The intent is to have it essentially replace the, be the heavily override before we essentially take heavily to the ballot in November. So we need those 2025 taxable value numbers from the county before we can finalize that, but it should be right around that 3.1 mil mark.
I want to note that, you know, we just went through contract negotiations with the police officers, unions, two of them, and the result of that negotiation is an increase in the cost of public safety to the city. That's just one of many reasons why we really need to think hard about how are we going to utilize the resources that we currently have through tax revenues and be able to continue to provide the services that everybody expects and wants in this city. Implementing a Public Act 33 special assessment provides the city with the room it needs to be able to make sure that there isn't any cuts in services, and that we're able to effectively manage the cost of public, of at least contracts that we just entered into. It is intended as a tool to allow the city council to define a budget that will allow us to be able to live within our means, and yeah, it's an increase in tax for sure, everybody, if it gets approved, everybody will be paying more money, there's no question about that. But the risk of not doing something like this is that we might have to cut something, right? That we may run into a challenge where we can't keep up with the budget that we've defined, and therefore, you know, we might have to do a budget amendment that cuts something that we had previously approved. And the city doesn't want to have to do that, so it just, it's a tool. There were questions about the number of mills that will be assessed, as Mike stated, currently planning on a 3.1-mill assessment, as that's what's recommended by the Finance Review Committee, so it's not a full 10 mills, and it's not a full 10 mills for both public and fire. It may not end up being exactly 3.1 mills, we'll have to do an assessment of that when we get to the point of actually defining what the special assessment toll will be. There was also a question about what part of the city is included in the special assessment district. Yes, the intention is it would be every single property. Yes, the intention is, by law, every property has to pay the same number of bills. We can't, there is no mechanism that we have in place to assess different millage rates for different parts of the city. So those are all true things, and hopefully answers a couple of questions that were raised during public comments, or public hearing on this item.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, did you want to address the, excuse me, the intended duration of this? I know that was brought up.
Yes. It was. Yes, could you please? For, here, unless that was a question.
Yes, I'll kick it off. So based off the Finance Review Committee, the intent of this is to only be for one year. So based off their recommendation, hopefully in a couple months, council finalized language to finalize November ballot language for heavily override, that's on the table. But the intent with this, it's for one year. We create the special assessment district, and then every single year, if it exists, council has the opportunity to hold a subsequent public hearing and establish a levy for this service. So for example, based off the Finance Review Committee, if heavily passes in November, there's no need for this coming in summer of 2026. So this is essentially supposed to be just a stopgap for a year, but it's completely dependent on how November goes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the request to amend zoning ordinance for ground for multifamily residential in the Village Center District. Do you want to go ahead and get?
Yeah, we do have Eric from Giffords Webster here to help present this item.
He can go ahead and present it, Eric.
I'm sorry?
He can go ahead and present.
Okay, sure, sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, the city's planning consultant. And as has been discussed earlier this evening, the Planning Commission last week had voted to forward a proposed amendment to the city council for adoption of proposed amendments to the Village Center District. And so I'm just going to kind of give a little bit of a synopsis of what was discussed and what is before the commission this evening, or the council this evening. So, what's shown on the screen here is just a general concept of the master plan here that has been under consideration and discussion over the past many years, most recently in 2021, with a lot of focus on the Village Center District in terms of the makeup, the massing, and what's ultimately envisioned of the Village Center District. So, over the past three months, the Planning Commission discussed the proposed amendments, holding a public hearing on January 21st, 2025. The following additional discussion, following were additional discussions on February 18, 2025. The PC made a motion to recommend to the city council to adopt the proposed amendment, removing one of the criteria noted in Section 3.1.8.0I, which requires a project to rehabilitate an historic structure. So, within the amendment is to allow for multifamily residential use on the ground level. This would be allowed to be permitted by right, subject to the Planning Commission's consideration and approval and review. Section 3.1.8.0D, the ordinance, as it currently discusses, is for the placement of the buildings within the district. So the building in the VC district are required to comply with the Build Two Zone. This allows for buildings to be built up to the property line, and then under consideration by the Planning Commission, the setback can be up to approximately five feet from the property line. And so this is to encourage design flexibility. This is how the ordinance is currently written, this is how the master plan encourages Village Center developments. The only difference in this case would be for the allowable use, which is what you're considering this evening. The PC currently has the authority to determine flexibility within the setbacks, as I mentioned, the Build Two Line, which designates that, so long as the Planning Commission finds that the development meets the intent and the spirit of the ordinance, and that that's maintained. The amendment adds consideration of a historic structure component stating that the PC, the Planning Commission, may allow flexibility for building placement for historic buildings and additions, provided that the development meets the intent of this district. And then moving on to Section 3.1.8.0E, building elements, all Village Center ordinance standards remain the same pertaining to the base, the middle, and the top sections of buildings, except that, in addition to an arcade or storefront, the proposed amendment would allow for residential uses on the ground floor of multifamily residential buildings, by stating, and this is the proposed amendment language, that multifamily residential buildings, when ground-floor residential is permitted by the Planning Commission, there is no prescribed building frontage, except that buildings, building fronts should generally run parallel to the street. Facades facing public rights-of-way parks and plazas should contain windows proportionate to the building facade. And so this was an amendment to keep in mind the allowance for the multifamily, the residential use on the ground floor, to allow for the Planning Commission to have oversight of each individual site plan that may be proposed for approval. The purpose of this amendment is to allow further flexibility as found to be appropriate with the consideration of the Planning Commission. The existing section that regulates ground-floor windows and doors now specifies the standards are for arcade and storefront frontage types only, and this is because these are geared towards multi, or multiple building entrances, where residential uses would not reflect that. And then moving on to Section 3.1.8.0I, this again is also within the Village Center District. The first-floor uses on primary streets, the ordinance currently allows for retail and restaurant uses facing a primary street, requires them to be at least 20 feet deep as measured from the street-facing facade. And then the proposed amendment to that would be for the Planning Commission to waive requirements when it's determined the following criteria are met, and there are three. There was four, but the first one, which was the project involves the rehabilitation of a historic structure to be removed, excuse me, the Planning Commission had asked that that Criteria A, standard A, be removed, and so it's the following three that are under consideration. The first being the project satisfies a demonstrated need for housing in the city of Lathrop Village. The second being the project includes passive or active open spaces such as parks, plazas, and/or event spaces for public use. And the third and final being the project is consistent with the city's master plan. The second point under this section of the ordinance is, in order to promote a more walkable downtown area as described in the intent of the zoning district and the city's master plan, banks, financial institutions, professional medical, administrative offices, and daycare centers shall not comprise more than 25% of the street-facing facade of the same side of a single block along a primary street. And that's current language that's written within the ordinance as it stands today. Again, the whole idea behind the proposed amendments is so that the Planning Commission can still maintain input into the site plan review process as it relates to proposing mixed-use developments that just so happen to have multifamily residential uses on the ground floor. So these are meant to be in keeping with the intent and spirit of the current ordinance, but are also mindful of the goals and objectives of the city's adopted master plan. Allowing developments in the Village Center District, the flexibility of multifamily residential use on the ground floor, will continue to maintain the Planning Commission's oversight of the site plan review process and apply the practice of good planning principles that can best be applied to the city of Lathrop Village. So, at the Planning Commission last week, and I believe at the Historic District Commission, there was a presentation that was given, and so there's some slides on the screen that demonstrate and reflect kind of what has been discussed over the years in terms of the intent of the master plan and the way that the Village Center District is currently written. I'm not sure if I can get, oh, there we go. So this is an overview of the school area. I apologize for the location of the mouse here. Okay, so on the, this would be the east side of Southfield Road, shown here. This would be just a 3D model representation of what's envisioned for the Village Center District, with the focal point being the school here. And as we know, the school is set back a certain distance from the property line along Southfield Road. However, with the minimum setback being, the requirement is up to the property line, you'll see that the representation shown here is that the proposed buildings on either side of the school have the ability to go up to the property line, and of course, with the proposed amendments, that would be subject to the Planning Commission's deliberation, consideration, and working with the applicant for those, the appropriateness of those requirements. So again, just to demonstrate and show that this has been a continuous discussion with the city and the village back in 2012. There was a town hall meeting at the school to share the 3D model, hear feedback, and discuss next steps with the community. And then, there's been, just a timeline shown here back from 2009, that the first concept of the Village Center was shown and presented to the village, or to the city, 2012, the Village Center 3D model, 2024, I'm sorry, 2014 and 2015, the master plan was updated, and to reaffirm the VC, the Village Center, and expand on the concept. Also in 2014, the U of M EDC studied to include, sorry, another conceptual layout, and then of course, in 2021, the master plan process was revisited and updated, which maintained the Village Center as what we see today, both within the Village Center section of the ordinance, as well as the master plan goals and objectives for the future. And I think that may be it. I'm having a little trouble advancing the slides here.
It takes a second.
Okay. And so then with the 2021 master plan update, again, we did visit the concepts and the ideas, goals, strengths, and the multifamily residential as a component of the Village Center District in terms of mixed-use, but also within the Village Center-zoned parcels out, on the outlying areas of the school and surrounding area, that residential is also discussed as a component there as well. So having ground-floor residential is not a foreign concept in terms of developments within the Village Center District. It may not be within a mixed-use, multi-story building, but within a town, more of a townhouse setting on some of the side streets. But that just gives you the general overview of discussing the Village Center District, both in terms of the existing code and in terms of the master plan, and what the city has envisioned for the future. And as you're aware, the economic conditions in terms of the types of uses that can be developed on the ground floor of buildings has changed or continues to change, and so... And so, with that in mind, the developer has sought further consideration for different uses on the ground floor of the buildings, also engaging the school, the existing school as different uses as well. And in meeting with the applicant over the years and months, you know, the discussions were to determine what the best uses would be within the footprint of the school, not only to, not only to be available to the residents of the building, but also the residents of the community. So, that's where we're at in terms of the process. What's before you today is not a site plan. It's just the concept of permitting the multifamily residential use on the ground floor of developments within the village center district. So, happy to take any questions. I'll stand by if there's any questions that I can help with in terms of answering for the community.
Thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion to amend the zoning ordinance?
I will make a motion to amend the zoning ordinance for ground floor multifamily residential in the village center district as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. From my perspective, this zoning amendment allows us to have a conversation with the current owner of the school building that if this doesn't pass, we can't have that conversation at all. It provides the planning commission with flexibility to either approve or deny. Does not blanket approve first floor residential throughout the village center district. It does not provide, all it does is, is ties our hands to, because the city does not own this property. So, i- if we are not approving the zoning amendment, then, and then the Cernow company has to go back to the drawing board and provide something else. Something else could be the school building is destroyed. And I don't want to see that happen. So, from my, I just want to have the conversation. I want to feel like we can actually talk with them about what the plan is, improve, address some of the concerns that have been brought up tonight around things like safety and security, address things like the proximity to Southfield Road, and many other concerns that I've been hearing people talk about both in these meetings and out in the community. Again, approving the zoning amendment doesn't provide a blanket approval for first floor residential occupancy in the village center district. It just provides another tool to the planning commission to be able to have a conversation with not just Cernow, but any other property owner that has a property in that district. It also makes sure that the planning commission can, you know, if there are future proposals that are brought up that are requesting something like this, then they have the ability to reject the creation of additional first floor occupancy developments, should the planning commission see that to be appropriate. Also, the planning commission has seven members on it. The most diverse commission that we have in our city government. The most number of voices that can be heard in making a decision.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments?
As I understand these changes, I like the reasoning behind them. I like the, I believe, all, most if not all of them all say, you know, it has to be permitted by the planning commission. I like, because my current understanding of my role, there's not much I can do with, unless there's an ordinance issue with businesses that want to be created. As I understand it, that all flows through the planning commission. I like the fact that all of these say it must be approved by the planning commission so that residents can go to planning commission meetings and be a little bit more involved to try to get their opinions heard as opposed to me feeling handcuffed to give them another avenue to voice their opinion before things go all the way.
Would it be feasible for maybe you or Cernow to maybe kind of share why they think the first floor is the better option opposed to, you know, retail?
Evening, everybody. Sam Cernow, Cernow Company. So, to answer that question regarding retail being on the first floor, so it really comes down to, you know, demand for retail. So, up and down Southfield, there's a lot of different buildings. There's a lot of retail, you know, between, you know, twelve and eleven mile. And we've, we made a heavy investment in retail, and there's still a lot more vacant spaces up and down the street. We've incorporated a mixed-use element into this project. So, we have co-working space and a, and a, and an element of commercial in there. So, the, there is, there is a level of first floor commercial in this project within the existing school building. And so, for us, again, in order to make the, the project feasible and to meet the demand, like, there's actually a need for housing. There's a housing, great housing shortage in Michigan. And for us, we have a lot of, of, of commercial property. And so, I think that, you know, from our standpoint, why would we want to add more retail and add more vacancies to Southfield Road when we can actually fill a need for, for apartments, which we think actually will, will get filled and, and do well? So, that's my piece. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I, Jordan Sherman, Vice President, Cernow Company. One other thing I would add is the school itself doesn't have any first floor residential. The school's going to be mixed use. So, as you see in the drawings, there's a basketball court, there'll be a cafe, there'll be different many space that can be used by the residents, but also used by people in the town and rented out. The first floor residential is purely in the wings of the building on the side and just becomes really mostly a situation. We're also down, of course, to talk through to what the council is suggesting, all the security concerns and working through that openly and transparently with the planning commission over time to make sure everyone feels comfortable with this should be able to pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments?
If you guys have any, any other questions.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're still in a motion.
We're, we're for the council.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I, but I mentioned during my comments earlier that passing the zoning amendment provides the city, and particularly the planning commission, the opportunity to have a discussion with you, that the owner and developer of this project that would otherwise not be able to happen. So, you're proposing a project that includes first floor residential. You can't, we don't have that support for that in this district right now in the zoning ordinances. So, without that, we can't have a conversation about things like, you mentioned there's an established need for housing. Like, we need to see reports, right? And, and, but there's no point in you putting energy or money or resources into defining such a report if we don't have the ability to approve the project the way it's being proposed. Now, just because you're proposing it a certain way doesn't mean the planning commission is going to approve it, right? The planning commission could get the site plan approval and, and reject it. But you can't even start the conversation until we get to that point, right? So, things like, there's a surplus of retail. Yeah, you can see it with your eyes, but I'd love to see a document that establishes that as well. I want to have those conversations. Without the zoning amendment, we can't, we can't do that. So, the security thing, like, we can have a conversation with you about, well, how do we assure security for the people that might occupy this building, either for residential or for commercial purposes? The look and feel, the size are all things people are concerned about. We can't even have a conversation with you about that until we have the zoning amendment. Also, the planning commission for sure, as you know, because you've done other developments for the city, you're going to want a traffic study and an infrastructure study. Again, why put resources into that if we can't even, you know, have a consideration of approving, an opportunity to potentially approve what you're proposing?
So, Commissioner Hammond, I mean, on all those other developments that we were talking about, those traffic studies and other reports were requested, and we were more than happy to provide them. And I think that, like, looking back at the meeting last week, I'm really glad that somebody might be standing next to me told me not to appeal because I think, you know, from that HTC meeting initially, we kind of felt like we've spent years on this project and that there was really no other hope. And I think that, you know, the, we want to come at this from a team standpoint. And I'm really pleased with the outcome of the meeting last week because this was us putting, again, everything on the table, like, there's nothing to hide. What other, what everybody thinks, of course, everybody's entitled to their opinions. But like, from our standpoint, like, we want to be able to work with Lathrop Village and have those conversations, whether it's about security or traffic study. Like, our goal isn't to come in and try and ruin what's going on at Lathrop Village. Our goal is to try and promote economic development and do what we think is in the best interest to promote other businesses and restaurants and things like that. And so, you know, we're, we're here, we're in it for the long run, and, and we greatly appreciate the ability to continue those conversations. But this is a, this is definitely something that we're going to need in order to take that next step. So, I just, I think that that's, you know, for me, I can't iterate it enough. There's a long way to go. There's a lot of things to talk about with this development. And we want to approach this from a team effort because we believe that with everybody's, you know, input and, and thinking about this really carefully, that we can achieve a great result, so.
Thank you.
Is Eric still over there? I know you said the guy next to you. Was it Eric or Jordan that? Just checking.
I'm sure he's a great guy.
Nope.
I, I just want to reiterate that the, the passage of this amendment puts another tool in the planning commission's toolkit to be able to have these conversations about site plans like this and proposed development projects like this. It's not a blanket approval. It's not a foregone conclusion. It just allows a conversation to happen that otherwise stops and doesn't go anywhere and opens the door to development that may not be what people really want to see happen in the village center district.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Do you already have public comment? It happened earlier when we had public comment Friday, it was on the agenda.
Sorry, order.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Bargstow.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up is request to approve LV PD patrol vehicle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to turn this on over to Lieutenant Zhang to kick this one off.
Good evening, Council. Lieutenant Zhang, for those who don't know. At the end of January two thousand twenty-five, one of our officers was responding to a critical life emergency for a child and unfortunately drove one of our Tahos into a ditch and struck a culvert. That vehicle was unfortunately totaled. So, with that being said, the insurance company is willing to pay us out twenty thousand dollars. Just to add that this vehicle was the oldest in the fleet and scheduled to be replaced this coming fiscal year, starting July one. Our, my, Michigan deal's contract pricing for a new Tahoe is fifty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we are with the anticipated procurement date of this vehicle at the end of May. So, we're asking for approval just about a month and a half early when we be cutting this check. We're also requesting additional twenty thousand dollars for an equipment changeover, vehicle markings, and other equipment.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a Tahoe four-wheel-drive police package from Burger, thank you Chevrolet, for a cost of fifty-three thousand two hu- fifty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and a not-to-exceed cost of twenty thousand dollars for equipment uplifting, changeover, and vehicle markings from Canfield Police Supply.
Would like to make a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Was there any consideration given to trying to acquire a used vehicle?
A used vehicle? No. We, we put so many miles on these things so quick. This vehicle was only four years old and had over a hundred thousand miles. So, for us to get a used vehicle with any sort of mileage would just decrease our time to own it, so.
I was just thinking about, like, you, that old vehicle up, it's four years old. And four years ago, there was probably no, not more than twenty thousand dollars of upfitting put into that vehicle. And if you were able to acquire a vehicle with appropriate amount of mileage for a lower cost and then reuse the equipment that fit the old vehicle, if you have the same model year, it would also fit the new, used vehicle. So, I'm just, that, that's where my head went. Was like, was it at least, was it considered, obviously, I mean, the mileage thing is appropriate?
Yeah, we like to mile out, mile, mile out these vehicles around a hundred thousand. I mean, these vehicles are driven twenty-four seven. We like to use our oldest vehicles the most, so we keep two fresh and two used. And most of these light bars and LED lights that you guys see on our patrol cars now are LED bars that were around when I started here eighteen years ago. So, we have been very fiscally responsible in not replacing all these stuff. But the hazing and everything on that, that's starting to happen on that plastic, on the plastic tops are actually diminishing our views from, you know, policing accidents and things like that. So, we're asking for a little bit more this year to actually replace some of those overhead lights and stuff like that for officer safety and, and for the motor in public.
So, yeah, the investment in newer equipment will provide a safer operating environment for the patrolmen operating the vehicle and the, and the public that they're protecting.
Sure.
Is this Officer Zhang, is this still the same Chevrolet organization that you use to get the special, it's like a special discount you guys?
And my deals, yes. And my deals offers the best pricing on all police vehicle packages.
And piggyback off that. There, there are a lot of dealerships that honor my deal pricing with police cars, especially when you're in a tight turnaround. It's just who has availability. So, with Chief and Lieutenant Zhang, we actually also looked at exploring different options for vehicles just for timeline. We looked at the, naturally, you might have seen them in different communities, trucks. We're going the Ford Explorer route, we're going the car route. But with the build of our crew, they really enjoy the Tahos. And Burger seemed to be the only one that had an available one that they could get to us relatively quickly.
The build of our crew? Like, how tall people are?
With, with police vehicles, Lieutenant Zhang touched on this more. It's not like a normal car where you can just adjust everything perfectly. They, they're built in a specific way. So, we do have tall gentlemen in our crew. We do have shorter people in our crew. These actually fit all of our crew. So, if we went the Charger route, a lot of them probably couldn't fit.
We've also talked to Oakland County Garage. They service the, all the Oakland County Sheriff's cars. They have everything from Tahos to Tauruses to Silverados to Tahos. And Tahos are by far their, their longest, the longest longevity of, of any vehicle that they have.
They last the longest out of all those.
Yeah, so, I've asked them their, their opinion. They said stay away from everything but the Tahoe.
With this next one, I know, like, the colors of the vehicles change a lot. Are, are they, are you sticking to a certain color or?
We don't really have that option. I don't actually even know what this vehicle will be built. It's either going to be white or black. So, it's going to match all, all of our old patrol cars in two thousand twenty-three. We skipped a fiscal year to replace a patrol car in two thousand twenty-three. They, they provided us with two black Tahos. So, I, I, I don't know it's going to be black or white.
Okay.
I'll just, I mean, this is a freak thing. We did not budget for this, right? Accidents happen, cars totaled, we've got some money back that's going to help pay for the new one, right? So, that helps. But like, you know, these things happen where things that you're not budgeting for impact your budget, and now we have to address them. It's another example, we were talking about the Public Act thirty-three special assessment. You know, it, it could, a move like that could free up money if something like this or another unbudgeted event happens in the future that the city needs to figure out a way to, to address.
And if I could just add that this vehicle, we were going to, this is an absolute necessity for this coming budget year. So, this will just be that vehicle that's in place of the next, the next.
Yeah, you're going to ask for it anyway.
I'm not going to come to you in another month and ask for another patrol car for the next.
And if you were going to ask for it in the future at some point, it was going to be fifty-three thousand dollars instead of fifty-three thousand dollars minus the totaling of the, the money from the insurance company for totaling the damaged vehicle. So, it actually, I mean, it happened sooner, but in some ways, it's an economic benefit to the city, especially since the officer wasn't injured.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Bargstow.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve contracts for legal services.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the city's current legal firm, Baker and Alwiski.
Alowski.
Alowski is dissolving. But Attorney Baker and Kimberlin are moving forward under their own firm, the Baker Legal Group. So, due to this change, we're looking for a city council to approve an updated legal services contract. Everything in the contract is the same minus the name change.
Gotcha. Would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the contract for legal services with the Baker Legal Group, PLLC.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Why is Baker and Alowski dissolving?
My partner joined another firm, my former partner, Jennifer Alowski, joined another firm. So, Leanne and I are remaining together, but we're going to be operating under my entity, which is Baker Legal Group.
And again, there's no, no changes to the contract except just the name.
All, all the, the rates, everything are, are consistent with what Baker and Alowski. All, all the, the rates, everything are, are consistent with what Baker and Alowski were charging the city.
Okay.
Is there a length of time associated with this contract?
Uh, under, per the charter, the city attorney serves for an indefinite period of time.
Okay.
And I did not write the city charter.
Any other questions?
Did, Mike, did the city look at any other firms to?
No, it's, it's at the discretion of city council. So, so city council directed me to, then we.
Well, we didn't do that, okay.
We can, I'm hearing everything that's going on. Oh, they left. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Concerns, comments?
Was there, um, just out of curiosity, is there a reason why, like, maybe, um, Kimberlin didn't become like a, a partner, I guess, or?
She didn't, she doesn't want. Uh, I, I did offer that to her if she was interested, but she's looking more towards, um, winding down her legal career and, and embracing the retired life, so, uh, she didn't want her name on any, any letterhead.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Barstow.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Motion passes. Next we have the, uh, appointment to the historical, or historic district commission. Um, currently there's two, oh, I'm sorry, I'm taking your job. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So the HCC currently has two open seats of their seven-member board. Uh, so over the past month, we've advertised the opening and we've only received one application for consideration.
Thank you. And so for my recommendation for the committee appointments is going to be, um, Diane Weems. So I have a motion to accept Diane Weems as a historic district commission for the term expiring December thirty-first.
Motion to appoint Diane Weems to the historic district commission for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Um, is there, um, so do we need to still be promoting this?
Yeah, we will. We'll, we'll take a couple week break and then we'll advertise it again.
Okay. Do you know, have you, um, thought of maybe any other routes we could take to promote this outside of the, the newsletter?
Really, the only other, we, nature utilized website, newsletter and Facebook, the only other route really would be a newspaper, but we try to avoid spending money soliciting.
Right.
I would encourage you to ask the existing historic district commissioners to please ask their neighbors to consider. Um, but, but just to unclear, this is the only application the city got during the most recent period, uh, requesting application.
Correct.
Are business owners allowed to, they, they can apply for this too, right, or no?
HCC has to be residents.
Residents, okay.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barstow.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. She is appointed. City administrator report.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney.
Nothing for me tonight.
Uh, reports of boards, commissions and committees, downtown development authority.
I can touch on that. So the biggest thing out of DDA this past Friday, it's they are wrapping up their alley paving project. Uh, they approved a contractor this past Friday and hopefully we have pre-construction meetings over the next month or so. Uh, but the plan is to kick off hopefully mid to late April and be wrapped up by July sixth. So this will be the end of the DDA's alley paving program.
Thank you. Planning commission.
Yeah, obviously the planning commission recommended approval of the zoning ordinance amendment that was approved today by the city council during our last meeting. Um, we got an update on part of the Panera project. So we entered into a planned unit development contract with, uh, the organization that owns Panera to build the new location. And part of that included outdoor furniture for the cement pad that's on their property closest to Southfield Road that hasn't been there since they've been open. But we did get an update that the equip, that furniture had been ordered and so we can expect the outdoor seating away from the building closer to Southfield Road, um, in the spring, most likely. Am I missing anything else, Austin?
No, the, um, equipment's been ordered and it should arrive shortly.
They're just waiting for the weather to improve to actually install, uh, the final amenities in the public zone of the PUD.
Uh, what about, uh, any other project updates that I'm forgetting from your project update list? Oh, the project update list is now posted on the city website. So anybody who wants to understand the current status of any projects that are before the planning commission can actually see a spreadsheet that tells you the most recent updates to any site plan that, uh, is before the planning commission.
Thank you.
But, uh, other than, than that, I don't think there are any other updates to.
No, not, uh, not too many changes over this, um, uh, last month, but we will have a, a site plan for a, uh, use change for the new development next door that will be coming, uh, to next month's planning commission meeting.
Great. So that's future thing to look forward to. That's it? Thank you.
Any other discussion?
No, we had a Parks and Rec.
Oh, sorry, I bet, um, Parks and Rec.
Uh, first off, go Parks and Rec. Um, we have, there's trivia night, March twenty-first. Uh, please come out. We've heard, we've got a lot of good feedback from the prior trivia nights. I believe you can either contact, um, Mike or our Facebook page to sign up. Uh, also, we have some upcoming community highlighted, highlight classes planned, but we're still looking for residents who would like to share a skill or talent, teach a class or give a talk on a subject they're passionate about as part of our series. Uh, you can visit the Parks and Rec's Facebook page for more information, I believe, and to apply. And as usual, you can also contact Mike. Thank you, Mike. Go Parks and Recs.
And I, I already signed up, registered, it was very easy. And the only trick I had was, uh, to, you have to pay to participate in it. And, uh, the, the, where you pay is actually a link in the confirmation email when you register. So it's kind of a two-step process and you need to look for it. So I just want to bring the people's attention if they're wanting to register and pay online for this. Look at the confirmation email after you do the registration and then look for the link to actually execute payment through something called zipfie.com.
Bring friends, friends, family, smart people, not smart people, it's going to be a good time.
Any other discussion? Tree committee. I hand it over to the expert in the trees. The expert in the trees, the expert of the tree committee.
I was going to say, seems to be like he's in a seat right now, out in the trees.
Good evening, Ma- Mayor Garrett and city council members. Um, some exciting stuff about, uh, our tree committee. Um, we've been revalidated for Tree City USA. And that's something that's really big. It's been missing for five years now. And it was, there's four criteria to get Tree City USA. The first thing is having a tree committee, and that's what the, uh, tree, or a tree board, which is the tree committee that I'm on. And so we can, you know, manage our, the trees that are in our, our village. The second thing is to have an ordinance, you know, as far as, you know, care and maintenance, you know, of the trees. And the third thing was to have a, a community program as far as, uh, the city sponsoring us and having a minimum, you know, annual budget of two dollars per, per capita for each individual. And then maintaining and having a, in, in Arbor Day. We did one last year, we have one scheduled for this year, which is on, um, uh, April twenty-sixth. But this has been five years in the making, I mean, since we've had it. And it's, you know, it's a positive thing for the city. So you may want to ask, you know, what's so big about trees? You know, why, why do we really need to have them? I, I made a little list here. Um, let me just get my glasses here to help me see it, you know? Of course, it helps to mitigate, you know, urban heat island effect, keeps things a lot cooler, uh, reduces stormwater runoff, and I think a lot of us can feel the pains of that in the spring of the year or even getting close to now when things are melting. Improve air quality, uh, boost mental and physical health, reduce traffic noise. And I think we really want to have that, especially with, uh, talk of the new, you know, apartment complex. Increase prop- property values and to reduce, uh, energy costs. Anyways, it's a positive thing, tree committee is excited about it. We've got a couple other things happening as far as a grant that we're waiting to hear shortly. But other than that, that's, that's it for the tree committee.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Robert.
Historic district commission?
I could touch on that, we touched on it multiple times today. Uh, so the HCC met last week to consider the proposal for the next door project. And as we all know, they did approve the draft plans and proposal for next door. So that hurdle has been complete by the developer and now they move on to the next steps.
That was unanimous too, right?
Yes, five to zero.
Thank you. Um, Southfield School Board.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the Southfield School Board will be hosting their state of the district, uh, March twelfth, Wednesday, March twelfth, from six PM to eight PM. That will be at Southfield, uh, High School, um, and that is at two four six seven five Loser Road, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three three. Um, some things they'll be touching on, uh, updates on the SPS district, twenty-twenty-two capital bond status, uh, free refreshments, um, university high school, uh, academy will be performing, uh, their choir, um, and they have much more as well. Um, so if you would like, I will send that to Mike and you can put that on the, um, newsletter. Um, also, um, the reps will not be attending tonight. We had a misunderstanding in dates. Um, and then lastly, uh, the school board president and myself, we're still working on a joint me- meeting. Um, so we probably will look forward to that in the spring, um, for that to happen. So those are my updates for SPS.
Thank you. What was that date again for the state of the?
March twelfth, Wednesday, March twelfth. Free refreshment.
At what time?
Six to eight PM.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished or new business? None. Um, we have public comment, speakers unlimited to three minutes. And again, um, please pay attention to the, uh, bullets at the end of the agenda. Does anyone want to be heard?
This would happen when you had people who cared about Lathrop. This was our demo to try and save the Old Town Hall from CERNO. The Maori people of New Zealand have a quote, they say you are nothing without your past. To lose your roots is spiritual death. And that is what Lathrop has been experiencing for some time now at the hands of the CERNO group. When those demonstrations failed, and my mother, these letters had written to the, it was called the Bureau of History Historic Preservation Section up in Lansing, they wrote back to the council saying, keep the town hall, don't let it be destroyed. But of course, we know CERNO went in and trashed it and put up that crummy building, uh, as a replacement. And that led to the creation of the Lathrop Village Historical Society. Now, they not only were important in getting the historic district created, but they held public lectures, they had a newsletter, they did a variety of things to acquaint people with the history of the place. And of course, getting back to school was the main thing that was important, that was going to be the public center. Those two big classrooms would be the museum and the archive and so forth. But that didn't happen because by the turn of the century, my mother's generation were either dying or they were ending up in assisted living and there was a void. And that void got filled by people who were moving into Lathrop who didn't have any of that commitment. And those people turned it into an anti-preservation group. And at a notorious meeting in two thousand nineteen, where they had a talk about Fago Pop rather than history, uh, they made clear very publicly, they didn't care about school or preservation. They also turned it into a private club that only people that they approve of could be a member. And if you want preservation, you can't be a member. I've certainly been blackballed. Now, that's a real slap in the face to the Lathrop pioneers who not only created Lathrop in the forties, fifties, sixties and into the seventies, but they created the Historical Society. And why is that important? Because somebody from the Historical Society gets to sit on the historic district commission, someone hostile to preservation. And of course, yesterday, we saw how hostile they are. There's now a dingy old room down the basement that they've turned into the Historical Society room and they've honored one of the people that was behind the takeover, Net Kingsley, rather than the people who were the founders of the Historical Society. It is a disgrace and it speaks volumes about what that group has become and the lack of respect for the people who created the Historical Society, who created Lathrop.
Thank you. Would anyone else would like to be heard?
I do. Um, I just wanted, for the record, that, you know, I'm really disappointed. It appears that decisions were already made. I hear yes is real, real quick. I also, you know, a lady had stood up here earlier and she directed, um, Mayor Garrett specifically, but, um, I mean, I just want to say in general, the lack of, um, attention, I, I'm feeling what she's saying. I, I don't want to say it that aggressively, but I'm picking up what she was putting down. The vibe in here is your, your mind is made up and you've divided the city into, you know, two different sections. That's, that's the vibe I'm getting. I'm fairly new to all of these meetings. I'm woke now, I'm, I'm paying attention. I plan to continue to pay attention and I continue to pay attention to how all y'all vote too. So, that's all.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that would like to speak?
Thank you, um, Emma Lauren Barris. Um, first of all, I wanted to say for people who are new and who don't understand, study session is a chance for the council to work out these things and talk them over before they actually come to council and place a vote. Um, so, uh, study sessions is where all that stuff is worked out. And I'm wondering if Mike or Austin could, um, please describe how the DDA is a separate entity from the city and how they receive their funds, because there's been some talk about that online, and, um, why the city couldn't just take their fund balance if they were dissolved. From what I understand, if that were to happen, um, it, it would have to be a decision of council. That money would go back to the county and not the city. So I, I would like you to clarify that. Um, it's been my privilege to come to these meetings and share my thoughts and opinions and hope for the city. And I thank you for, uh, creating a space for us to do that. But I want to tell you, this has not been a safe place without harassment. Um, I face boos and I've been heckled as I stand here at the podium to share my three minutes and I remain silent and other people are up here for their three minutes. Um, I've been tripped and kicked on purpose as I walk back to my chair with people purposely trying to harm me, um, because they had a differing opinion than me. And when I have a differing opinion than someone else, I stay silent. This is their right to express that opinion and, um, I, I appreciate their right. Um, I am disappointed, um, in, in council not being, adhering more to those bullet points in the back. Um, we've had a code of conduct for some time because of people like that and, um, we haven't adhered to them. And so, um, frankly, I, I want you to take it more seriously because when people act unhinged, we should believe them. Um, I feel it's dangerous not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Let's see, when she's laughing, it is when I walk by, this is what I'm talking about. I'm haggling. Excuse me, Blair.
Hi, folks. I'm Ellen Greenia and I live on Santa Anne. Ellen Greenia. I live on Santa Anne, the southwest corner. I usually have choir on Mondays, so I don't get to sit here in person. I skipped tonight, felt it was important to be here. But I do catch them all online, so I feel like I know you all, all personally. Um, I'm proud to live here and speak proudly of my quiet and loving neighbors and neighborhood. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration before voting on the first floor residency. I'm glad you were able to focus on the issues at hand and are glad you represent us. It's by uplifting each other and looking forward that we grow in community. We're all entitled to our opinions. Please continue to keep the honest communication open. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, Autumn Susannas, Rainbow Drive. Um, so you guys and the historic commission, the planning commission are supposed to be our protectors, Lathrop's protectors. And I've read, um, And I've read, um, city is often referred to and votes to as, as in the female. Um, Laterp needs protecting, like a woman needs protection. And it's interesting to me that no one has made any mention of the return of our attorney Baker. Nice to see you, except that no one on this council that I know of has made any mention of his hundred-and-day suspension that just expired. Um, it was a no contest plea for professional misconduct. It was case number twenty-four dash thirty-five dash G A. The notice was issued October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. People asked, where's our attorney? Um, instead, we had Leanne, who was, uh, giving us interesting advice. She, she was giving us counsel while our Historic District, uh, Commission was, uh, told that they were going to tear down the building and there was nothing we could do if, if CERNO said it was a financial hardship. And she neglected to just go down a couple more lines in that ordinance in our charter, section forty dash thirty-one, that says, "Acquisition of historical properties in all, if all efforts by the Historic District Commission to preserve a historic structure fail, or if it is determined by the commission that public ownership is no, is most suitable, then council may acquire such properties if deemed to be in the public interest, using public funds, gifts for historical purposes, grants from the state or federal government for acquisition of historic properties, or proceeds from revenue bonds issued for historical properties, or proceeds for, from revenue bonds issued for historical purposes. Such acquisitions shall be based on the written recommendation of a Historic District Commission." Unfortunately, our Historic District Commission caved. They weren't strong. They didn't stand up. They didn't protect Lady Laterp. We bent over. We're taking it like, like a... Jason, you said that, uh, we, we can't even have a discussion until we, we, until we get pillaged, ravaged, until we, until we, until we're laid out and there's not even a discussion of, of... It's like, um, it's like you've tied her hands and feet and you're about to just take full advantage of her and it's disgusting. I wish she had been protected. I wish she'd been protected.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak?
I just, I have to say this. You know, I've lived in a, a lot of other communities. I've lived abroad. Um, I moved here to Laterp Village because I liked the community. My son lives here, a few doors down. I'm actually appalled and I'm ashamed. And it's how that I see this community being so torn apart. Um, I don't have an answer for it, but it's actually shameful and how, um, our residents can come up and, you know, actually be mean. And I actually think that some of our representatives are also very curt. I don't understand why this community, which is so diverse, both, you know, ethnically, racially, you know, of how, uh, you know, who we want to love, who we want to be, be with, wh- why can't, why, uh, do we have such a divide? You know, why can't we be together? Um, I understand that we have a very big, uh, uh, issue, which is the historic, uh, anti-Laterp Village. But there has to be some way where we can communicate a little better. And I, I mean, I, I, I know that's very emotional and I don't really want to be emotional, but I'm here as a resident, wanting to do good things for my community and good things for my neighbor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to be heard?
John Roberts, uh, Laterp Boulevard, forty-six year resident. I must say, I've, I've been very disappointed in the last few years. Not with the city council. I've been disappointed with the residents who seem to think it's okay to take snipes from the audience at our elected officials who are here doing volunteer work. I personally tried to communicate with people on one of the other sites that's not a city site to, uh, try and rationally talk about and ask about what solutions people could offer. And I'm always met with, uh, things like, uh, name-calling. I was just recently called a moron. Uh, not too long ago, I was called a slum landlord. And, uh, it's unacceptable. I, I, the fact is, is I think that social media has put us in a position where we are willing to say things there that if you said them to the person face-to-face, they'd punch you in the face. And I want to see us figure out a way to get the, the community back together. And I think what's going on in some groups is trying to run for city council to install a whole other bunch of people. And that's baloney. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Tim Hillman. I live on San Quentin Boulevard. Um, I've taken a lot of the most recent comments here tonight, uh, to heart. And it, uh, reminded me of, uh, one opportunity we have as a community to come together and learn more about each other, perhaps how we can be better neighbors to one another. Um, I know Laterp Village is one of very few metro Detroit suburbs that is actually a majority black, um, population. And I think it would behoove most of us, especially perhaps white residents of Laterp Village, to attend a panel discussion that's being hosted just across the street on Thursday evening. Uh, it's February twenty-seventh between six and nine P M. Uh, Boys to Men, who many of us I'm sure are familiar with due to their work in their community, is hosting a Black History Month panel discussion that evening. Um, and I think it might be a good opportunity for us to, uh, to understand our humanity a little bit better and hopefully improve our relationships and dynamics as neighbors. So I encourage you to attend. Um, it's fairly easy to find if you simply Google it. Um, Boys to Men with a two instead of T O, number two, uh, Black History Month, uh, discussion panel. And I know that at least on the Villager's, um, Facebook page, it's been advertised several times. So I would encourage your attendance. I will be there, uh, if you want to sit with me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Hearing none. May I hear council comments? So, let's start with me. Um, the one thing that I thought about and I, I guess I'll apologize. It doesn't seem like I'm paying attention, but I think you want me to understand exactly what you're asking. So when it comes to, after going through three pages of information, that I remember what each person said. So me and typing are not getting along. My wrist is hurting. So today I am writing out every single thing that I can remember and, and su- summarize. I'm not a short and person, so you can see what I wrote. It's not ignoring anybody. It is strictly trying to capture everything. And it is where I'm, am listening to you. If you prefer me to listen to you and not write and I don't remember what I need to answer, I'm sorry. So I heard a lot of people being disappointed about, um, a variety of things. Number one, it wasn't a quick decision, um, to, to shuttling. It was not a quick decision. It was a very difficult, at least for me, and I'm only speaking for me. It was a very difficult decision. Cause one thing that no one really knows, except the people that want to know, is I am somebody that considers residents because I am a resident. And if you take the time to stop and talk to me, come call me, email. I've told people repeatedly, you can come and talk to me about anything. But I will say this, I don't do name-calling and I do not, um, do where I feel like I'm being attacked. I just, no, I'm not saying it. I'm just giving, I'm, no. I'm, I'm, excuse me, I'm still talking. Okay, okay. So, okay, that's an assumption. I'm not talking to you. I'm just giving, I'm giving to her camera, to our cameras. These are the rules in engaging. That's all. So I mean, you're doing the same thing to me right now. Nobody can see your face but me. So if we want to do the assumption thing, that can go all day long, okay? But nonetheless, if you would like to talk to me, to get to know me, then feel free. Because most people will know that I take this seriously. I want to sit for free for fourteen years on a council. For fourteen years I've been on this council. And what I found very interesting about the CERNO project, it started before. The whole, uh, the whole, uh, setup, it started in two thousand ten. I didn't start till two thousand eleven. But you're mad at us because we moved something forward that was already done by a previous administration. And that's true. You saw that. It was obvious. And that shocked me also. The one thing I also do is I do do my homework and I do talk to people. And I want everyone to understand that. There are times you're not going to agree with me and there's going to be times that you are going to agree with me. And I'm only speaking of me. I can't speak for the rest of the council. So, um, some of this I was writing too fast, so I'm trying to read it. And, um, it really is mostly for, uh, the third, excuse me, the first floor occupancy. There was something that someone said, uh, da, 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 that was very interesting to me, which this CERNO leave, you left. Okay. Someone was saying something about seniors and it's not a senior development, right? So I'm not really sure why we were honing in on seeing. I'm still talking, Autumn. Uh, Autumn, 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 okay? From my understanding, Autumn, so let's address that too. People, if you saw how many complaints we are all getting about interrupting our proceedings, being disruptive, um, and it, it's, it's where we are coming up to a decision with that. And that's why I keep pointing to the, the, the bullets because they will be enforced. They are going to be enforced. City Attorney, the city manager and the chief of police are in discussions about those bullet points being, um, followed because it's unacceptable and how, like someone was saying, who just said, oh, you said it. Uh, how the, these proceedings have been going. And I know I can do better and I am doing better. I know I am. I write a whole lot of scripture right here to make sure that I'm doing better. Uh, and that's serious. I'll show you that too. The point is, I'm going to do my best to be respectful and civil to people. But what I'm seeing from the, the, some of the residents, uh, uh, they're not giving that back. And that's what we have to draw a line. I fully agree that we all need to do a reset on how to be civil to each other because, you know, I never said how long I've lived here and I've lived here quite a long time and I plan on staying here much longer. But I don't lead with that because it doesn't matter because we all need to learn how to live together, whether or not you've just moved here yesterday or you've lived here for fifty-seven years. So, we need to do better with that. Then it was, I think we answered that for the hearing. Sorry, sorry, sorry. What happened when I, there was another question. Anybody else can jump in. I have to go through all of them because I was... Feel free to just jump in and I can...
I have a bunch of things. Um, I, so I want, I just took some notes.
Oh, I got it. One, and I'll wait till after all the council is done with their, their part. But to just double down with explaining the DDA and how we, um, capture, um, the money for that. There was... Oh, about protecting, um, the community, we do. And I will say again, I'm going to say this for me, but I think it's all of us. We represent everybody. We don't represent one side or the other. We have to consider everybody. So when you're saying we're not protecting, uh, the city of Laterp, I think we, we take it to heart of how much we do protect it. Um, I'll just stop there because I, I can keep going with all these ones trying to explain. You go ahead.
Okay. I have a bunch of things. I guess to start off, just piggybacking on, um, what Lauren asked about, but if the DDA is disbanded, what happens to the money? My understanding, and either Mike or Scott can correct me if I don't have this right, but if, if the DDA is disbanded by the city council, the existing money that's in the DDA fund is split between, some of it, a relatively small percentage goes to the city and the rest of it goes to the county. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it gets returned to, because the, the way the DDA, and not to get into too much of a lesson on how the DDA collects its funding, but it captures from different entities and organizations. And so, uh, and then in addition, it takes, uh, a mill on top of, uh, dedicated solely for its functioning. Um, if the, if that were to be dissolved, those funds would be returned to the appropriate authorities.
So wherever the funding came from.
Where they would have normally gone to. So, uh, some of the money is captured from the county, some's captured from, um, school districts, some's captured from the city, some's captured directly from the residents of the DDA. It would, it would be proportionally returned there.
So it's not, it's not a safe assumption to make that if the DDA is dissolved, the city would just recoup all that money and be able to add it back into our general fund?
Correct. And then if, i- i- it is changed, and again, not to get too off traffic, uh, o- off topic on this, but it has changed since the original, uh, creation of, of the DDA, uh, legislation. Whereas, uh, previously, all of these organizations that are, their monies are captured, um, they didn't either, either they elected not to opt out or they didn't have the ability to opt out. Now, uh, the DDA districts are created. A lot of these organizations, county being probably the prime example, they opt out of the district. So meaning the district, if it were to be dissolved and then subsequently reformed, you're likely not going to be capturing the same level of tax dollars that you're capturing today because of those, those potential opt-outs. So just something to keep in mind.
But the risk, like if you dissolve and then it's a future council decides to reenact a downtown development authority, the funding sources may not all be the same.
Right. It's going to be severely limited to, compared to what you currently have.
Thanks. Um, I wanted to make some comments, uh, response to some of the things that people made, uh, brought up during public comments throughout the meeting. Um, so, uh, Bruce Copas had, uh, asked about the master plan and should we not be encouraging developments that are consistent with the master plan? And if the master plan, um, is not meeting the needs of the, what developers are proposing, shouldn't we update the master plan before we consider any changes to zoning ordinances or any other, uh, any other, um, uh, resolution, any other way to address that challenge? And, um, you know, my, my, this is just me speaking personally. My position on this is that the master plan was developed, as you've heard, like over many decades, right? The last time it was updated was in twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, and the investment that was envisioned by the people that have established the master plan in the first place, like led to the zoning districts that we have today, um, that investment hasn't happened. So the master plan is not effectively encouraging the type of development that was envisioned by the master plan, which tells me that, yeah, the master plan is out of date. It needs to be reconsidered. The community needs to be involved in that and there's an opportunity for that to happen. But we can't stop progressing just because we want to use that as a mechanism to slow down a specific project. You know, we, we see that there are empty, uh, retail businesses, uh, within the Village Center District, but we also are seeing that there is some development happening. We have the era, the update to the Laterp Center, um, and now this proposal for the, this apartment at the schoolhouse. So, you know, the, the, the in, in intent to trigger some sort of investment is occurring in part because what the, the master plan, but it's not, the, it, that's not the way the master plan had envisioned it. So, um, I will also note that, um, you know, the master plan does call very explicitly, and I'll quote this, uh, "It calls for diversity in our housing stock." One of the things that's in the master plans is, well, what do we want relative to housing? "Attractive, safe, quiet and well-maintained neighborhoods. A diversified range of housing for people of all ages and abilities and active neighborhoods that promote community connectedness." And one of the objectives related to that desire is to provide a diverse range of housing options that meet the affordability, maintenance and lifestyle needs of current and future residents. If you listen to the news, uh, at least the news that I'm reading and hearing, more and more younger people are cohabitating because they can't afford to own houses on their own, right? They're living with two and three, um, roommates. Uh, you have young families that can't afford the down payment to buy a house because they're just not earning enough money to be able to save enough money to put a twenty percent down payment on a new house. And so they're having to rent whatever they're living in. So this city, I mean, it, it, the, the, I think we saw in a report recently that like the average, uh, uh, sale price of the house in Laterp Village is somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars right now. Like, if you're just starting out with a young family, like, it's really hard to come up with the money to get the down payment to buy that house. So if we really want diversity, uh, to, to provide a diverse range of housing options that meet the affordability, maintenance and life- So if we really want diversity, uh, to, to provide a diverse range of housing options that meet the affordability, maintenance and lifestyle needs. Of current and future residents, then we need to provide more diverse housing options than just what we have in our housing stock today. My perspective only, and of course, I'm, people can disagree with me and uh, I'm totally okay with that. I'm just voicing my opinion about that. Let's see, um, uh. Diane, you've mentioned in several meetings and including tonight's meeting, that Jeffrey Sernow tore down the town hall. Went back on promises that he's made. I didn't live here, wasn't aware of what was going on back when that happened. But I do wanna state that Sam Sernow was not Jeffrey Sernow. Right, and yet they're family, but I'm not my dad. And he makes, made many different decisions than I would have made at various points in his life. So, I would just encourage, please, you know, express a little bit of grace, that he's an independent person. Who maybe doesn't support all the decisions that his father made in the past and shouldn't be held to account for decisions that he didn't make himself. Is an indication of decisions that were made in the past by one person is not indicative of the reason for decisions that are made in the future. By a different person. Uh, Carol asked about um, zoning amendments that uh, allow a conversation to occur that would not otherwise occur. Um, I just, uh, oh, yeah, this is a note I made relative to that. And I reiterated them earlier, but things like safety and securities concerns, um, the, and things like uh, community use, right? So, part of the concern is, well, we're closing off the school so that it can't be utilized by residents of the city. That's not exactly true, yes, it is a private residence, you do need to be allowed in, like based on what we're being proposed, not what, nothing's approved yet. But residents could, can be provided access to the public spaces in the proposed building in the schoolhouse. Just by um, reserving them, right? There'll be a process, they get set up, but the intention is to provide something that, yeah, it's primarily a benefit to the residents that are renting. Units in the development, but there is also a courtyard area that the public can utilize. There is references to improvement to the dog park, which currently is totally not being used at all. Like, there will be some public benefits that occur with what's being proposed. So, um, again, the, passing the zoning amendment allows this conversation to happen for us to request things of the developer. That we can't request if we don't have that language in place and can't even start that conversation. That's what I mean by, uh, you know, Autumn, you were saying, that I, I said something about um, that we can't have a conversation at all. And we just allow them to run roughshod over us. It's not what I'm saying at all. Uh, we may go through this conversation and review of, of a site plan at some future point and reject it. And the project may not happen. And that might open, open up the opportunity for other things to happen to that property, of course. Tearing it down is one, but it's not the only one, and Autumn is absolutely right about that. But we can't even get to that point, right? If we don't have the tools in place to allow us to have those conversations. And that's, that's all that I was trying to say about that. One of the possibilities could be, maybe the city offers to buy the property from the Sernows back and do something with it. That's, you know, Autumn mentioned in reading of the historic district commission, we, where's the budget to do it? We can, we have to find it, but we can't have that conversation unless we go through this process and get to that point. Where we could actually make a proposal to do that and see, and it's a long shot for sure. But, so I, I wanna see us go through the process to get to the point where maybe, you know, we can come to an agreement on something that can be built and benefits the city. But if that fails, then we gotta move on to plan B and uh, who knows what that looks like? But we, we can't even get to that point unless we have the tools that we need to have those conversations. Uh, Shelley, you said uh, during public comment that this is uh, an attempt by the council to put a feather in its cap and take offense. I'm not trying to get any sort of recognition for anything like that. I'm just trying to have a conversation with the business owners and developers in the city, me personally.
Well, I didn't mean to offend you, so I'm sorry for that.
Thank you. You said that you felt that uh, our minds were all made up before we came into this meeting. You gotta understand, like, we've been looking at this issue for months. Like, yeah, I, it may have looked that way, like I just walked in here and snapped my fingers, but I've been rummaging on this for a long time. And I'm doing it both on the planning commission and the city council. So, trust me, just like Kelly was saying, it, we, we struggle over making decisions about how, about these things. And look at both sides, uh, and everything that different, that residents are telling us, regardless of where they, their personal feelings are. And the result may not be in alignment with what any individual resident, whether it's you or anybody else comes to. But believe me, it's not a snap judgment, pre, predefined determination. It, it takes a lot of work and in, and looking inward and considering all the viewpoints that have been expressed to you. To come to some sort of a decision. So I can understand why it might look like we got presented one thing today and made a decision based on that alone. But trust me, that's not how I did things for that decision. Uh, Jonathan mentioned something about proposing underground parking. Again, I wanna have a conversation with the Sernow company about more creative ways to execute what they are proposing. And I feel like the zoning amendment approval is the gateway to having those conversations. And I hope that, and I, I believe that I will be right about that, that we will be able to come up with compromises and improvements. About what's currently the renderings, before we get to the point that there's a site plan that the planning commission could actually consider approve. Okay, and then um, about uh, what Lauren mentioned, uh, you know, feeling uncomfortable in council meetings. And um, and unsafe, and so I wanna address that. Uh, I prepared notes, so forgive me for reading these, but I wanna make sure I say what I intend to say about this. Cause um, I'm pretty upset about it. City council, our boards and our commission meetings must be places where all community members feel welcomed. It's in the best interest of everybody in the city, whether a resident or a business owner or a staff member or a police officer or whatever. If you're in this community, it's in your best interest um, that you feel like you can attend any of these meetings. And make public comments without fear or trepidation of any sort of reprisal or degrade, degradation. Residents and business owners in the city play an obvious and important role in this. But it's the city council's responsibility to make sure city meetings are welcoming to all community members. We must lead by example. I take responsibility for my own actions, cause I know at points in the past, I have upon reflection realized that I could have caused people. To feel unwelcome or intimidated in city meetings that I've been a part of, either as an audience member or on city council or planning commission. Um, the city council members are elected to represent the entire city, as Mayor Garrett mentioned earlier. Um, and as such, we must hold ourselves to a higher standard. And we must continue to take the actions that are necessary to create a culture and an environment at city meetings. That welcomes all voices in the community and encourages the civil debate that is necessary for the city to move forward in a healthy way. So, you know, believe me, you know, Shelley and, and uh, and Leslie, your comments about the division in the city. And the feeling, picking up what you feel like we're putting down, like I, I hear that and I feel that. And I think that we can do better. And I think it's our responsibility on the city council to create the environment for that to happen.
Thank you.
I believe it was Leslie, correct?
Yes.
I, I agree with you. Um, I feel like there, the city seems divided, but from my blatant point of view, it just seems that people at times. Lose control of their emotion and potentially of what they should be doing as an adult. I find myself at the end of a lot of meetings saying, hey, why can't we just treat each other with a little bit more grace? Um, I sit here, I've heard a lot of people infer that, not just specific of me, but me in terms of, you know, in council. Are sneaky, letting people take advantage of the city, uh, hiding everything. I've heard a lot more uh, negative comments to my face. Than I've had residents reach out and talk to me about anything. I say a lot, I, there's only so much I can take here, but like, reach out to me. I like to have conversations, I like to have discussions with people. And the amount of people that have reached out to me is far less than the amount of people that will, with no. No consideration for any sacrifice that I've made for the city, any decisions that I've tried to make for the best of all ci- citizens. Uh, they will not speak to me not one time, but feel free, I mean, feel very comfortable saying scoffing, uh, eye rolling. And that's their right, but I agree, I think that's why we can't have, I think that's a barrier to us having civil discussion. People not being willing to be civil when faced with decisions that they don't like or decisions they don't agree with. I hope that can get better. As usual, I just want people to give other people grace. I've heard a lot of people, heard some people refer to the public act thirty-three as a cash grab. I'm, if that's what we end up doing, that's what we vote on, I'm voting for my own taxes to get raised as well and it to go to the city. I'm a little bit lost in, on how that is a cash grab, um, from my point of view. This wouldn't be the first thing that me as a citizen has paid extra for, for something that not just, that, that the city gets to. Uh, benefit from. I, I really wish and hope we can have discourse. And at times we can, at times we can't. But, again, like I'm, I'm thirty-two, I have two kids and a wife at home. I understand people have lived here longer, uh, but as many people alluded to, I would like to believe that my, as a citizen. My opinion and my thoughts count as much as the next person, because I live here, I have a vested interest in this city and the city thriving. I don't get any, I don't get any kickbacks, I don't get uh, any special considerations. I volunteer my time to try to do my best serving the city and the citizens. I'm not gonna claim that I always do what's best, or I'm sorry, I'm not gonna claim that every decision I make is the best decision. But it's the one that I've thought about, it's the one that I've heard uh, mo- most residents' voice. It's the one that I think would be best for the future and present of the city. I just want people to, to just remember, you know, we sit up here and we do a really good job, I think, of not scoffing. I can't speak to the, them, I don't look at them, but I try to make eye contact, I try not to make anyone that's saying whatever they wanna say feel any sort of way. Besides listen to, and I just ask for the same courtesy, at least for me, that I try to give uh, all our citizens. Shelley, I know you said you feel that decisions were already made before we came in. And from my point of view, to a degree, that is true, because, you know, we get this packet uh, Friday morning, I believe. And um, from my family situation, I'm not able to attend many of the study sessions. So, I do my homework as best as I can, I try to reach out to, uh, I look at what's on the packet to be voted for. I try to reach out to Mike, I try to reach out to Lieutenant Zhang, I try to reach out to anyone I can to get information. So that I'm not just coming in here throwing up a prayer. I'm more than willing to, to talk about any, any, any vote that I make, I'm more than willing to. And would prefer to have conversation with people, especially if they disagree, because um, I've heard a lot of people. A lot of people feel that just because someone is or isn't in favor of something, they are doing it for a reason. Uh, if you disagree, if you don't like what, the way I voted, I would love to tell you why I voted that way. And hopefully I could start some sort of discussion, because I don't think I'm right all the time, I don't think I'm wrong all the time. But if I can't have a discussion with someone, I just have my own opinion. I think that's the majority of what I have, just as usual, I want us to have grace with each other. I think the best way for me to change my mind on something is to have a discussion with me. Uh, I think it's human nature to, if someone feels attacked, for them to become defensive. I, I have had conversations with residents and um, whether we agree on stuff or not. I like the, the practice of having a discussion, uh, either way. And I just hope that as a city, we can treat these meetings and these decisions that we have to make as a community. And there's gonna be some decisions we like, some decisions we don't like, but uh, there's still a future for us to, to try to work together. So I don't think we should sever those connections, sever those ties based off of one decision that someone doesn't like.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
How do you prefer that those discussions begin? Because I, I emailed everybody.
So, there are a few citizens who email me separately. So when we get the same email, uh, I believe for um, public hearing.
Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Open Meetings Act requirements, we can't all reply all, because then that's us having an open meeting.
I got some replies, not, not from everyone. So I was just again wondering, how would you want those discussions to be?
You can send me an email if you, if you have a question for me.
Personal, individual ones?
Sure.
Okay.
Now I will say, like, if it's uh, email sent to me that's not based off of something, an opinion I have. I don't know how well I'll be able to respond to you, but you can send me an email.
Any response really was what I was looking for, and I didn't get any, so, just.
I may have misheard you, I thought you said you did get responses.
From a fu- a few.
Okay, I.
Jason and Bruce emailed me back.
Okay.
That's it.
If you email me personally, um, I'll either let you know, I'm not the best person to ask, or I can let you know my opinion on it.
Okay, maybe I'll try again.
Please do.
Well, I know we all have to speak for ourselves, but I feel personally that we all genuinely do care. And we all do wanna make the right decisions, the right votes. Um, I feel like I have the privilege of speaking for everyone, even though everyone has said the same thing. That they do take the time to think about these votes. And you know, these votes, I, I sleep over these, this one, you know, has been giving me a lot of trouble. City administrator knows that, um, some of the council members. So, these things can keep us up at night, um, from time to time. So I do got, I do want you guys to um, just feel our hearts that we do want to uh, make sure we're doing the best thing for the city. Uh, I would much rather you be mad at me for an apartment building than for them to tear the building down. Just honestly, personally, I would rather um, that anger, um, cause I know what it feels like to, you know. Maybe think that your history is being erased. Uh, and I don't think that this is erasing history, I think this is um, the ability to preserve history. Um, it may not be in the way that we all want it to be, but right now, this is the discussion on the best solution. For preserving that history for the city of Lathrop Village. Um, I don't want to address everyone's comments, but I do feel that this room is dark, it's divided. Uh, you know, sometimes I come in here like, just not feeling the best, but we do have a job to do. Um, a voluntary job to do, not to highlight that at all, but we do have a job to do. Um, we wanna do that job the best, some of us, every, well, most of us, yeah, here, we all work during the day. So, we, you know, we have a lot of things going on, but I think we all take the time to make sure that we are thinking about these things carefully. For a long period of time, uh, we have had a lot of time to think about these votes. Um, some we don't always, you know, it's Friday, you start thinking about it and you meet with the prospective leaders within the city. To make sure that you're making the sound decision. So I think we all genuinely just want the best for the city, I personally do. Um, I don't want you to think that um, I have any ill intentions. Uh, this is the best uh, going right now, the best idea that I see fit to happen. Um, I want progress to happen in the city, so um, I don't want to see the city stagnant. And that was a choice that I think that. And that was a choice that I think that most of the city will reflect. This room does not reflect the entire city. And I think most people would love to see some new things happening in the city, uh, new people coming to the city, new restaurants. New attractions, um, just more things to do, because driving downtown every day or on the weekend. Sometimes is just a hassle, so I would like to see more things come to the city. Um, and I'm going to be in favor of those things, so going forward, so I just want you to know that. Um, I have the best intentions for the city. Um, I treat these decisions um, with a lot of care. Uh, Officer Zhang knows that as well, like, having these conversations, so I don't want you to think um, that we are, we have any ill intentions. Um, and I do apologize, but I was made aware that um, some of the emails were sent to all of us. And usually when they're sent to all of us, we don't all need to respond, so next time I will do my best to respond to your email, so. Make that apology, but other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, no, we're having a motion to enter into a closed session to consider a periodic personnel evaluation. At the request of the city administrator Green, per the Michigan Combined Law, or MCL fifteen dot two six eight.
It's been moving second, um, roll call, please.
Uh, council member Barstail?
Yes.
Council member Jennings?
Yes.
Council member Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. We are in closed session. Would like to make a motion to come out of closed session.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
It's been moving second. Do I need to do roll call on that one, Scott?
Barstail, uh.
You do roll call for everything else.
Okay.
I do work, don't.
Didn't do yet.
Council member Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Council member Hammond?
Yes.
Council member Jennings?
Yes.
Thank you. Would like to make a motion for um, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moving second, we are adjourned.